So I'm gonna vote for this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items today, and it may get a little bit complicated, but I will just read the three items, and then I will have two motions before me. The first item is a contract with the U of M for MPD to provide bomb detection services to TCF Stadium. The second is a contract with the U of M Police Department, with the U of M Police Department to provide extra security and tactical response at TCF Stadium. The third item is a contract with TASER International for purchase of body-worn camera equipment and video storage solution, and the contract amount is about almost four million dollars. And I'd like to pull item number two and number three off for discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Item one, item two, and item three have been pulled off for discussion. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. For item number two, we got a note from the MPD that in this situation, they wanted to delete this item from the agenda, and the reasoning was that with regards to this revenue contract, the University of Minnesota has asked that this contract be on two different contracts to facilitate their internal processes as it is being charged to different departments. And so I'd like to move that item number two be deleted from this agenda.
Councilmember Yang has moved to delete item two from the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. That report is our second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. On item three, then, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe in public safety, we had a staff direction, and then in Ways and Means, we also had a staff direction, and it might have gotten confusing as to just certain things that were in both staff directions. And so the city clerk had recommended that we put forth a motion that really consolidates both those motions for clarity's sake. And so you have before you the motion, and this is moving for approval of the following directions to staff related to the issue of body-worn camera equipments. So in essence, both those staff directions were passed in committee, but we're consolidating both of them to make them clear for us. And so I don't know if you want me to read the whole thing, but for the most part, I think it's pretty clear. You know, we've worked really hard with the three co-authors, also Council Vice Presidents Glidden and other councilmembers, to get this as perfect as possible, just so that we have something that everyone can be happy with. So I'd like to move that we approve this motion.
Councilmember Yang has moved item three on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, which has a staff direction, which is in front of you, entitled "Body-Worn Camera Equipment." It's a motion by Councilmember Yang, Councilmember Gordon, Councilmember Palmasano. Councilmember Gordon. On Councilmember Yang's motion, the staff direction.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I support this and appreciate the work that went into it. I was at the committee, the person who made the motion in public safety about this. This is when we were approving a contract that involved the expenditure of some four million dollars on body cameras. And there was some concern about that we don't have the policy set already, even though we certainly have approved funding and moving forward with cameras many times, and we've looked at a draft of a policy from our Police Oversight Commission. And we also have seen some other, and we know the police are working on it. And one of the things I wanted to make sure is that there was a community engagement process, so we've asked him to come back at our next meeting on March 2nd to present a plan to engage the community in developing the proposed policy for body-worn cameras. That's the first one, and that's definitely reflected in here. The third one was also part of that motion. It's indicating when we expect the policy to come back, April 6th, and it'll be presented, presumably after getting some community engagement and feedback between March 2nd and April 6th. We'll come back to the committee to be reviewed and to look at that. We've also asked for the city clerk to help develop procedures in governing the creation, accessibility, management, and disposition of the body-worn camera data. I think these, and I appreciate all the staff directions, I won't read through them all, but there's five items on here, and I think that this will help us make sure we're taking advantage of this new technology the best way that we can.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to my colleagues, Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Yang, in being especially concerned about the policy of how we take this on and how, what the policies and procedures are for police officers as they wear body-worn cameras. That is the first part of this combined motion. I want to just summarize the rest of them that are in front of you, that's items two, three, four, and five. This is about developing information and resources to help aid the public in accessing body camera footage. There's a lot of upfront education when somebody comes in with a desire to see an incident that they or a loved one may have been involved in. And I think that a little bit, we know, that a little bit of upfront education about how to best request that can both help with being really responsive to that request and not giving so much information back and creating so much work that that person, the requester, doesn't actually need. The next part is really about developing procedures about the creation and the management of data, of all of the data, of all of the terabytes that we will eventually have up in the cloud about body camera footage. This is about working with the police department and the clerk's office to develop that infrastructure. The fourth part is really about reporting that progress and how we're doing with that. I know that we all have an interest in making sure that this goes smoothly. And the last part is really about staff developing a budget recommendation for these ongoing costs. You know, one thing that strikes me is that we haven't really done a feasibility study. We've gone and we've benchmarked over other cities around the country that are doing this right now, and we know that it's going to be a lot, but to really do what in private industry is called more of a feasibility study of sorts. Separately, in next cycle, I will work with Councilmember Gordon, Councilmember Yang, to bring forward a motion that directs leadership to develop an action plan that will clear out what has become a chronic backlog in our Records Information Unit. This unit is often about needs like serving the public with accident reports, expungement processing, things needed by the public for their insurance processing, weekend judicial review. These things stand squarely in our way of getting a body camera program that's responsive to the public. I know we are all committed to making the city and our police department an open, transparent, and accountable organization. I believe body cameras can help us toward that goal. We've taken actions on that from a budget standpoint the past two years, but we cannot achieve that goal if we don't commit enough resources that allow us to be responsive to requests from the public or even for internal review. We know this from other jurisdictions, we know this from a review by our audit department, and we know this from statistics from the police department, that achieving transparency with body cameras is going to be a labor-intensive task. So to that end, I want to make sure that our significant investment in body cameras, including the four million dollars we are allocating today, will be a success. I think that we can do that with this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Just since we had so much discussion about this, both at Ways and Means and COW, I wanted to mention that I'm really appreciative to the authors for incorporating the language that passed through Ways and Means regarding how we handle staffing and budgeting. I think leading with the policy expectations and then taking a more holistic approach to any staffing needs that might come, again, through our budgeting process, is the right approach, and I'm really appreciative of all the work that's going into setting those policy expectations around this new program.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm also appreciative of the authors for bringing this motion forward. I think it also calls into question how we are going to function and interact with our audit committee and department. We instituted an audit committee, we hired an auditor, that auditor then goes and conducts audits, and in this case, the audit revealed of, among many different things, that we were falling dramatically and about 180 hours per week behind in terms of our public transparency and data practices. So, you know, I think that's a staggering statistic, it's one that we should be concerned about, and clearly we are, and it's one that needs action quite soon. So I'm glad to see this moving forward, and I just don't want to see us institute a wonderful policy with body cameras that is, under anybody's account, very necessary, and then not follow through to its entirety.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Frye. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the staff direction, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Then on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, number one and number three with staff direction, any further discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee is forwarding six items for approval today. Item one is a legal settlement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Track Expansion at Seventh Street Northeast. Item two is a request for proposal for graffiti abatement services, and that's authorizing issuance of an RFP for abatement services that cannot be successfully abated by the Division of Solid Waste, which does the primary work for that activity. Item three is the Minneapolis Open Streets 2016, approving routes and management service agreement, a very exciting set of activity that we look forward to this year, and also continuing our partnership with the Bike Civil Coalition. And item four is the Southwest Light Rail Transit Station names, and authorizing a submittal of letter to the Metropolitan Council regarding the city's recommendations for Southwest Light Rail Transit Station names, and I think that will very clearly clarify our city position on that matter and the community's position. Following items refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Item five is the Ninth Street South Kenny Residential Streets Servicing Project, and those are the actions needed to proceed. And item six is a bid for large diameter sanitary sewer cleaning, and that's accepting the low bid from Sewer Services Incorporated for the amount listed. I'll stand for questions, but move approval of all items.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation, Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick comment on item number four.
Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank members of the Transportation and Public Works Committee for this strong letter of support for the names for Southwest LRT. I want to note that this came as a result of Councilmember, Councilmember Yang's comment that he felt that the Van White Station really ought to be reserved for a station that serves North Minneapolis better than the Southwest LRT Station does. And I will note that the Met Council has approved, through their committee process so far, renaming Van White Bassett Creek Valley Station, which was the request of the joint committee and the city, and has reserved the names of Van White Station as well as Penn Station for the Botno Line. So we're moving forward. I do want to take this action today, but I do want to note we're being heard by the Met Council, at least the committees that we've been through so far.
Any further discussion on the Transportation, Public Works Report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means will bring forward 16 items for your consideration today. First is a land sale. Item number two is a settlement for workers' compensation claim. Item number three is a downtown improvement district grant and amended agreement. Item number four is a legal services agreement with Rice, Michaels, and Walther LLP. Item number five is a contract amendment with Restorative Justice Community Action. Item number six is a contract closeout with Premier Electrical Corporation for RGB LED lighting in exhibit halls at the Convention Center. Item number seven is an agreement extension between Hennepin County and the city regarding the Office to End Homelessness. Item number eight is the acquisition and redevelopment of the Roof Depot properties for municipal operations purposes. There are four associated actions with that, includes the acquisition of the real estate of the property itself for municipal operations. The second is directing staff to redevelop the Roof Depot site following LEED standards for gold level. Item number, portion three of that action is authorizing the issuance of an RFP for architectural and engineering services, and the final action area for this item is authorizing the issuance of an RFP for LED commissioning services. The ninth item for your consideration is a bond issuance for Target Center renovation project. Item number 10 is a contract amendment with DRI Consulting for Management Assessment Services. Item 11 is the IT gift acceptance for March 2016 SharePoint Fest Technology Conference. Item number 12 is a contract with Aramosa for Public Works Laboratory and Operations Data System Software. 13 is issuance of an RFP for Citation Issuance and Management System. Item 14 is a contract amendment with EMA for Maximo Asset Management Software. Item 15 is IT contracts with Erite, Cloud Sherpas, and Integral Rhythm for Service Now Application Expansion. And the final item is a contract extension for the Mayor's Office Interim Communications Director. I'd like to move all 16 items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to pull item number eight, the acquisition and redevelopment, redevelopment of the Roof Depot properties for discussion, and then I have a motion. Did you guys hand out my motion? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Conno has asked to pull off item eight. Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President, and I see that the motion is being handed out. I was able to forward it electronically to a couple of people this morning, but apologize, I didn't get around to sending it to everyone. I was preparing for this beautiful resolution we had this morning that I thank everyone for supporting. So this, this motion is a staff direction, and I'll just read it very quickly. It's to direct the staff work team consisting of Property Services, Public Works, and Community Planning and Economic Development to work with East Phillips residents and community members to identify redevelopment or leasing scenarios for the portion of 1860 28th Street East and 2717 Longfellow Avenue, not required for the water maintenance distribution program needs or public works functions. So what's been happening here is that, as you recall, my residents in this area and a lot of the environmental and sustainability community members and organizers have been working on finding ways to help the Phillips community turn around in terms of really addressing the cumulative impacts of the environmental pollution that has been concentrated in this portion of the city for decades. And we have the blessing of being able to work with a lot of our elected officials, such as State Representative Karen Clark, who is still here with us today. Thank you for your time. Your time is valuable. I appreciate you being here. We have also seen a letter earlier this week emailed out or distributed to councilmembers, co-authored by State Representative Karen Clark, State Representative Susan Allen, and State Senator Jeff Hayden. So all of these partners, both our multi-jurisdictional partners over here at the, at the state, ourselves, my office, the Neighborhood Association, a variety of community-based groups, including Little Earth, Themales and Bicicletas, and some of the other environmental justice groups that care about these issues, have really put attention to this future redevelopment site and project, not only because of its transit-oriented development potential, its connection to the Greenway, which, as we know, you know, in Uptown, the Greenway has gathered a lot of interest in development, and redevelopment is happening there consistently. And we'd like to see some of that happen also in East Phillips, which happens to be a racially concentrated area of poverty. And so for, for me, this motion is really about ensuring that the city staff, who are already detailed to be a part of the development of the Roof Depot properties, as noted in item number eight, continue to engage with our community to identify redevelopment scenarios that could create green jobs and sustainable future for this neighborhood, with the notion that we would focus on water maintenance distribution program needs and public works functions, resulting from a conversation that I had yesterday with Mr. Greg Goke, where those, those functions are being entertained. Of course, we know the water maintenance facility was one of them. Additionally, it sounds like they might want to do some other public works-related functions there, such as the concrete repair and parking ramp repair operations. And I think what we want to shy away from is continuing to further concentrate more municipal storage uses there that are considered dead uses for a TOD site, storage for elections materials, storage for police evidence units, that sort of thing. So the, the staff direction here before us is about focusing our efforts on helping the city meet its public works needs, as well as getting the community members to be at the table to identify redevelopment scenarios that would work for this very diverse low-income area of the city.
Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. In encouraging my colleagues to not approve this particular staff direction, I will point to how we got came here today. We have already put in motion the primary purpose of this site with a previous vote, but we have before staff coming back based on that previous vote, completing this step of the project, or the process, rather. And in the meanwhile, they certainly have done a certain amount of, considerable amount of consideration in terms of continued community engagement, and even looking and exploring at different ancillary uses for the site with community input. As a matter of fact, the RCA specifically calls out that continued engagement. Director Goke actually forwarded that clarification to Quincy and myself. Quincy, of course, being Ways and Means Chair, and myself, Public Works Chair, which was the primary user and the primary purpose why we're putting forward public dollars, to not set up and guarantee certain private interests, but to make sure that there's a public purpose that's, that's maintained, sustained, and, and something that I think we've agreed as a full council is necessary for our total enterprise activities. And so by honoring the RCA before us, honoring the decisions before us, and by kind of maybe discounting this continued notion that the Public Works Water Division, or any of the Public Works activities, are somehow not anti-environment, anti-community, no, they're pro-environment, pro-community, and I think if we don't start realizing that, or start honoring that sort of aspect of it, it's somewhat of a backhanded sort of discounting of the work they do. So I just wanted to make that part of it clear as well.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the consideration, especially from what Representative, excuse me, I'm looking right at you. Yeah, I just go by Karen right now. Okay. Representative Clark brought forward today. It's a fascinating idea, and it comes with money, and ideas are what's needed. And I just wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Reich just mentioned. In the RCA, we do have that community engagement and redevelopment process outlined, and this is already a promise that we're ready to fulfill. And this is a public works project primarily as municipal operations, but we also have, it's, it's an FSAM project. So this, this, we've initiated this by actually securing the property. We'll be able to go into the initial design phase, and that's where we do that project scoping. That's when we come up with what we want it to look like and the conceptual plans, and then come back from FSAM Committee back to this council for another look at what we're, what's the best recommendation and what could be included. And I'm sure that at some point, the urban, or the indoor urban farm, or other ideas that could come out of the process that meets with East Phillips neighborhood, developers, contractors, other tenants, would be all part of that process. So although I appreciate the sentiment of the staff direction, I think it's already captured in the RCA and in the action eight months ago, and in the commitment on behalf of the city to continue that work. So I look forward to the acquisition of the property in today's action, and then future actions with the Neighborhood Association led by our Property Services Department, including CPED, will, will bring that to fruition that we can have an actual response to consider.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I, I guess I differ from Councilmember Quincy a little bit, and I, my sense is if it's already called out in the RCA, and if this is consistent with the staff recommendation, what harm is a staff direction? Then clarifying it at the council meeting, that we all also think this is important, and there should be this community engagement with these three city departments. Clearly, this is an issue that the community cares about a lot, and they want to make sure that they might have an opportunity to play a role in. This is actually, I think, the compromise that we maybe could have found out last time, because we, I know this is at least the second time we're kind of discussing this, and this is an opportunity, I think, to help build bridges with the community and help show what a great partner we are. And if it's already mentioned in the RCA, having a staff direction now, clearly articulating that, will just add to that and strengthen that, and show that we are responsive and we're willing to look with our partners and work with our partners in the community and also at the state legislature. So I'm supporting the staff direction.
Councilmember Conno?
Thank you. I was just clarifying, was my motion seconded, or are we discussing and then seconding?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have asked for a second. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. It's been seconded.
Yeah.
Councilmember Conno?
Nope. Thank you. I appreciate it. So I just wanted to address a couple of things. This isn't a project of community engagement. I clearly see that the RCA that was approved by Ways and Means has language about working with the community, open houses, and engaging with the residents of the area, and that's great, and I'm really glad, and I support that, and I've been working with staff on that. That's actually one of the ways that this language even made it here in the first place. So I, I don't think that my staff direction is about community engagement, Councilmember Quincy. The, the spirit of the staff direction before you is about the functions and trying to balance the functions of the public works facility with the, the needs of the community. And so this is where, again, we're trying to tailor this project to meet the needs of public works in the water maintenance facility and the community, and discourage the other additional municipal operations that would be considered dead uses for the area, such as storage, to get those out of the picture, just so that we can really focus on the primary needs of public works, the water maintenance facility, which of course has been approved by the council, and, and so that's what this is about. And this would not replace anything in the RCA. This would be a part of the overall package, and it would move together to really focus and tailor the type of work that should be happening here. I also just want to say that by any means, I don't see myself as somebody who is here to punish any staff that has been working on this project. I find it problematic that anytime I try to participate and shape policy, I'm relegated to a position of, of being inadequate, or not constructive, or angry, or trying to create problems. What I'm doing here is really bringing the voice of my residents to the table. This is not an anti-public works project. This is a way to really ensure that the residents who pay our salaries, who pay for this building, who pay for this municipal facility, to be a part of the table and be a part of the conversation from beginning to end, because we are here to serve the residents, and they deserve a place at the table. So that's what the staff direction is here today, and I just want to make sure that people change their thinking in the ways that they hear my voice. I am not here to create problems. I am here to represent people who have been disenfranchised for centuries in this country, in this state, in this city. This is why the most low-income area, most diverse area of our city, also happens to be the most polluted. That is not by accident. That is by design, and I am here to say that design needs to stop, and this staff direction is moving us away from that and into a racial equity era. So I ask for your support.
Councilmember Reich. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I think Councilmember Quincy put it well, this is in fact not a public works project. They're our primary user, as identified in, in previous actions and currently today before us, but it's an FSAM project. We have lots of municipal needs, and that's why it's stated as such. This is a municipal facility. We didn't go into this spending a lot of public dollars to do a development deal. That would have come through CPED. It did not come through CPED. However, they will be involved in looking at these alternative uses after the primary uses have been identified through analysis. Before us, we have a process of analysis. We're not going to predispose or hamstring FSAM from doing what they need to do and what they've been directed to do on behalf of the city with city dollars by a direction that circumscribes that. If there's agreement that there's a process in place in the original RCA for participation, then it's a redundancy that's not needed. However, circumscribing the end use before we've done the analysis and given the previous direction...
Councilmember Yang.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Nay.
Worsami.
Nay.
Goodman.
No.
Frye.
Nay.
Palmasano.
Nay.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Nay.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
There are five ayes and eight nays.
That amendment does not prevail. Then on the item eight, we want a separate vote, I'm asking.